All right, we'll get started. I call the meeting to order. Let the minutes indicate all board members are here. President and Count Ford. We're going to go to item six. Item A, deep restrictions. And I make a motion that we go into executive session pursuant to KRS 61.810, number one. And number B, liberations on future acquisition or sale of real property by a public agency, but only when publicity would be likely to affect the value of a specific piece of property to be acquired for public use or sold by a public agency. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by myself, second by Ms. Brain. Any discussion? All in person say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Motion carries. We'll be right back, you all. You got it all in person, say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Mr. Brain. Instructional update.
Thank you. You got it, Mr. Gibson?
Yes, I do. Somewhere.
Good evening. It's loading. There we go. Exciting news tonight. I put a new background to the instructional update slides. Should be the top of the town by morning, I figure. We'll probably print that.
You advanced a full year?
Oh, wow.
Oh, it's because of the 20 questions.
Looking at who the future...
All right, so what I do want to talk about this evening is...
Somebody made a big deal of that, didn't they?
No, no. Thanks for not calling me across. What we do want to discuss this evening, seriousness, is tonight, you'll see on the planning agenda, and will be on the, for approval, next month, or next week, for the regular meeting, is this year's comprehensive district improvement plan. We will put the actual full plan in. It is quite cumbersome to navigate the system, and with the just, there's a quick turnaround with the team meeting and having it approved by the end of the year, so we'll get that loaded into your online boardroom. But I will go over, because the actual document is quite lengthy, so we'll go over the what you will see in there and the need of it. So, this is the same as it's been. Last year, we went through the kind of extensive strategic planning process to create the outline for the curriculum, the comprehensive district improvement plan, which would, should stay in place for three to five years. So, this is year two. So, this has not adjusted from last year. It has all of those same big four pockets of improvement that the team last year are kind of envisioning the future and what the upcoming needs are for the districts. First one being facilities and creating facilities that match the needs of our students. The second one being support services, which creating a system for students to make sure that we remove all barriers for learning for all students. Recruitment and retention continues to be a huge topic throughout the state, but as well in Woodford County, in terms of making sure we continue to have the highest quality educators working with, we already have the highest quality students, so we want to continue to have the highest quality educators working with our highest quality students. And then that fourth kind of pool of needs there is technology, utilizing the technology that we have. We have a wealth of technology in Woodford County. That is well-recognized, and thank you to the support of the board over the years to make sure that we have the access to quality technology, but ensuring that the teaching and learning and the curriculum supports that amount of technology. So, those are the big four kind of bubbles of work that we want to work in. The committee recommended continuing to move this forward. They didn't feel the need to make any adjustments on those big four bubbles of work this year, so those will continue to be as they were last year. No change there. Again, this is the committee that was put together this year to do the work, and thank you, great group of individuals committed to that. A lot of it is homework, more homework than actually together, in terms of looking at the data, looking at the information, and giving the feedback. So, I appreciate the work. This is, of course, as committees and school systems, is really just people serving because they want to serve the community and they want to serve the kids of Woodford County. So, I appreciate the people who worked on the team again this year. You can see our meeting dates. This is a live, this sheet on the right is on the website as well. All those blues are links, so that is all public information, should anybody want to look at the data related to the overview of the district and/or the items from each of those meetings, as we look through that data and determine needs moving forward. So, you can see those, the meetings as we set them up there, and how we move through the process. So, any questions on the process itself?
So, you start the meetings in October, so once we approve this plan, then they kind of pick up again next fall?
Yeah, and I will...
And so, really in between?
No, there, we have in the past, if need has arrived, this past year, and we spent a lot of time on the front end, and we did kind of a three to five-year plan, and trying to make sure that we were very intentional about those four buckets, so that we wouldn't need to. But yes, that is generally the outline. I will get emails occasionally from a team member, just asking about different updates and different strategies, but yes, that's usually how we...
Go back, huh?
Sure.
I just worry about this technology one. I really wish it would be more really evaluating how and at what point and for what we use technology, particularly in the elementary school. I think we, sometimes I just worry the emphasis is to get more technology into the kids' hands, and that truly is being shown to not be best for them. So, do you think that this, I don't, I just see the big PowerPoint. I know there's a plan behind this, like more detail. Is that, do we have that?
Yeah, so those will be the activities, right? So, the way the plan kind of outlines is you have, you have the objective, which is the overall three to five-year goal, what you're trying to work for, what you would really like to see. And then those initiatives provide a little bit additional detail of what you would like to be working on over three to five years. So, then what we do is we put activities to those buckets, right? And so, we have six activities this year. The majority of them are actually carryovers from the previous year. But those activities then kind of outline what this year's focus is going to be, right? So, this is kind of the five-year plan, and in a perfect world, the needs would stay fairly consistent, and you would have five years to kind of work on these objectives and these initiatives. And then each year, you, underneath that, you outline, these are the specific activities that we're going to work on this year. And though we work on all of those critical initiatives throughout the entire five years, the activities that I'll go over in just a moment is really like, these are the big six things that we want to work on this specific year. So, not that we're not going to work on all of those critical initiatives across the board, but when you just, you know, it's a, and there is a financial budget to everything we do, there's also a time budget. That's, that's a reality. And so, we, I look at the CDEP as, these are the big banks of information that we should be spending our time on, right? The activities are the six items that we need to be spending the largest amount of time budget on in the upcoming year. And we've, we are very intentional about making sure that that is truly the way we use this plan to drive forward. We don't, the CDEP process in Woodford County, I can assure you, is not a process that we take lightly, or something we do to just submit the document. And we really value the feedback from all the stakeholders in that committee that meets, as they really break down what we need to do and move forward. I tell the committee every time, every meeting, I need you all to make sure you look at the data and take this seriously, because this document determines more of my time than any one thing that's going to go on this year. And so, yeah, so while we're working on all of those initiatives, the activities are what we would focus in on over the next calendar year, once approved. And as you know, this, the committee makes recommendations to the board. The board has, you know, the ability to add or subtract or reword as they feel appropriate.
So, when you say the activity, that's the plan?
Yeah, the activities, so this is an activity.
Well, can we go back one...
Yes, ma'am.
To that first slide. I just had one thing I just wanted to add. When, I was on the CDEP committee last year, or the year, not this past year, the year before, when we did the technology focus, that had more to do with, we had school staff who were concerned about equity. So, they were concerned about certain, you know, students not having the same access to technology and the same skills and the ability to practice that, and the equipment as other students. So, we wanted it to be equitable for everybody. This year, Allison, when you guys met, were you talking more still about that sort of thing, or were you talking more about getting more technology in the hands?
There was only one meeting that I was on the committee for, and I wasn't at that meeting, so you'd have to ask Jimmy that. Mr. Brain?
Well, it looks like the plan is to ensure the staff is trained, so that means that's what the emphasis in this year is for this part of it.
Yeah, so if we go back to last year, so, one of the initiatives that actually rolled off, that the committee did not recommend continuing to keep on, was the technology curriculum at the elementary school. That really was the main focus last, that first year, in that we realized that we need to make sure that we intentionally teach our students how to use the technology for learning.
In elementary school?
That we, yes, yes. So, beginning with, beginning with just opening documents and typing, that they understand how to do that, and then moving forward into using Google Docs and using Google Slides, so that come middle school and high school, our students are able to use technology to communicate learning and access learning, right? That that be the emphasis of what we're doing at the elementary schools with technology.
So, that year, it was more about just equity and access, and everybody having the same kind of instruction. So, everybody had, knew how to open a document. Everybody was taught that at a certain level. Everybody at a certain grade level looked at a keyboard and knew where the keys were.
So, we wouldn't walk into a room and see everybody on an iPad? Either then, for those few minutes it would take to learn to open a document?
You, I, I can't promise that, right? Like, you shouldn't see, I would say rarely...
I'm talking about elementary.
Yeah, elementary. I would say rarely, I don't, where would you see, would you go to a classroom and see all kids on an iPad? Like, that would rarely happen.
Would I ever see a first grader on an iPad?
Sure, yeah. There are some things that we have to be, and we have, through this, really driving us as well, again, this is why this plan is so important, but we have spent a lot of effort over the last calendar year from this initiative, really engaging our schools in conversations about appropriate use of technology at elementary schools. I'll give you a perfect example. If you take, if you look at, trying not to bore you too much. If you look at, if you look at letter identification and sound identification, so early literacy skills, right? What you would see K in one, that is an area where, where we have found technology actually does a pretty solid job of really supporting classroom instruction, because when you look at the letter sounds, technology actually does a little bit better job at being consistent with students. When I say a letter sound, or if I say a blend, or if I say what a diphthong sounds like, I have a natural different intonation in my voice. If I have a cold, it's going to sound differently. All, it's going to be very different. I can, it's very hard for a human being to be consistent in those sounds, whereas utilizing technology for 60 minutes a week, a technology program can make sure that you're giving the kids that repetitive sound the same way every time, while showing them a letter right in their face, right? Like, there are very intentional uses of technology at K1, but I will, I 100% agree with you that those are limited. Like, those are limited. It is definitely not, we definitely don't want our students in K1 on the device.
And, and I think...
More than 60 minutes, right?
And I probably said this in a meeting, and I know, we've talked about it, I mean, I've read articles that now, it used to be, the equity issue was that the richer and more, kids with more resources had technology, and the poor kids did not. And now, like, the wealthier schools, the wealthier families who know about this, they're not letting their kids on it. And it's the poor kids who are basically a little into it, because the research has shown, so always the people with more resources, you know, and now it's like, kind of...
The pendulum has swung.
It absolutely has switched, so...
And we don't...
And the research is clearly ongoing, because this is relatively new technology.
And I do think we use the technology more when there are other mitigating factors, like if a teacher is out with a sub shortage, I think sometimes they use the Chromebooks to help when they're covering larger groups. At least, that's what I've seen.
No, that happens. Yeah, no, that, there's absolutely, that absolutely happens, and like, yeah, I mean, yeah. I mean, you're totally right. Yeah, you're totally right. And I, I just want to emphasize that, in no way am I arguing against what Ms. Eblin is saying. We have been very intentional about that. We had a great conversation about, at a principal's meeting towards the end of last school year, about that topic of some of the recent research. We talked to new teachers about it this year. First-year teachers in our district, we talked to about, you know, we have a lot of technology. What we need to be very intentional about in this school district is the usage of technology. And really, we do that...
And they're younger, need anymore.
Right.
I mean, it sounds like they're pretty saturated, even though it's not technically one-to-one, so...
We also see, in kind of the tough balance with it, is we also see either a meeting with our coaches today from each school, and a big piece of that conversation was problem-solving around. We see a lot at the middle school, you know, students are asked on state testing this year, and this isn't a bad thing, this is, all of us sitting here tonight have to know how to type emails, have to know how to respond in writing on a computer, and so we've got to start asking our kids to do that, and that we are problem-solving right now, how to make sure the skill of keyboarding doesn't inhibit students from accessing communication of information. Like, we don't want students to be asked to respond to, you know, you get two texts and have to respond in writing. They can read the two texts, they have great ideas, they can't type, right? And then, that is a, that is a huge barrier that we're facing as well right now, which it's, it is a, I, it is a tricky balance, right? There is a tricky balance between the right way to do it, and I think we're, we are definitely intentional about doing it, but I do not have the answer.
Well, and we really haven't taught keyboarding for 10 years, so kids have mainly been using keyboards, so it's starting to start.
Yeah, yeah.
But we are teaching keyboarding now, as early as fourth grade, right?
Yes, yes, we are, yes, mainly through programs, but yeah, and, you know, the conversation today was how do we do it appropriately? You can't just teach kids keyboarding through typetastic, is one approach. Like, you, they need explicit instruction on keyboarding still, and when do we fit that in? You know, you've still got an instructional day, so lots of little pieces to work around. Yeah, it's not an easy, it's not an easy issue. But I appreciate it.
What else do we have regarding this?
Yeah. And so, support services, the committee, we talked about individual pieces of the equity plan, whether to put that in, and then the committee just really felt strongly after looking at the equity plan itself, that we, the equity plan itself should be a strategy, enacting the equity plan, as the equity team has written. I will say, that last piece, and this, this is again, just to show of how important this process is, we included in this activity, professional learning related to this equity audit, will include a review of the opportunity gap, which is a national article that was written. That actually came from feedback from the community. That was on, the community can give input, and that came, it came, I don't know who wrote it, it was anonymous, but it came through that committee, through the community, that they really feel like the district needs to include looking at the opportunity gap, and that's included in the committee, felt strongly about that as well. So, again, just praise for the process, in that we really do look at what, all the feedback we got, so that, that piece came directly from community feedback. So, that area there, the main focus would be on the equity action plan.
So, we saw the tentative equity action plan.
Yes.
Has that...
We worked with Dr. Banks to make a few additional edits on it, on, just give it a few different additional details. We'll continue to work with her on that monitoring piece that you all asked for, and she is very well aware of that. You can see in the, the actual equity plan, I believe, is on the agenda. There is a, there's an additional column now for measurement, and how specifically to measure it. And I feel like we can approve the activities, knowing that the measurement is coming next.
It's not proposed, so the outcome is good.
But yes, we have made some additional changes after working with Dr. Banks through that plan, whenever she was here last.
Is that then finalized?
Yes, it is ready for approval.
So, that's one of our agenda items for next week.
Yes, yes. Yep.
So, we'll, yeah. Oh, we're approving it tonight.
There's two, there's a memo, and then the report, that's attached to the agenda, item IVA.
And these are carryovers from the last ones with additions, so recruitment and retention, as we've talked about, remains a major issue across our nation, and across our state, and in Woodford County, and as we've talked about on the front end. The additions to this is the substitute teacher issue. The committee did discuss at length about the issues that come from the substitute shortage, so developing a plan to recruit substitutes, and really working on that. I know that is not something that we have taken lightly so far, but just the committee felt very strongly that it needed to continue to be looked at. And then, same thing at the bottom there, as you can see, the additional add-in for retention for recruitment. It's all easier to retain your teachers and recruit new ones, so that's what that strategy really gets at, is including additional, intentional efforts to support and retain substitute teachers. And Dana Christian, who's on that committee, was formerly worked with substitutes, and she had really amazing insights and some kind of jumping-off points to really work on that specific piece, so I really appreciate her being part of the team as well. Technology, so with the, with the other plan being taken, with the curriculum being developed, as was on last year, the area of kind of focus this year would be continue to train on the appropriate use of technology in the classroom, and that's all that we talked about on the front end here. When it's the right time to use it, when computers do it better, and when it's the inappropriate time to use it, when we need to have students collaborating and talking and writing, you know, not on a computer, and making sure that we're intentional about that training, and continuing to be deeper into that. The last one is the remains as written from last year, which is create communicative facility path forward.
And so, who, do each of these have kind of a person that's the lead, or has the task, or...
Not, not the critical initiative. So, the activities themselves, I will put names in on the actual plan, or position, I should have put positions.
So, whose name is on this, this part?
Say it.
On the plan, the, who's, who's, what's the activity coming up on that?
Yeah, so that is, the activity is written there, so that, that...
So, it's just us, it's just the board? Is there any district employees assigned to facilitate this and make sure these...
I believe last year, we did have the, Ms. Smith was actually kind of designated on this, on this specific one, that we should, it should be positioned, not, not named. I think I made that mistake last year, and I can stand up here and think about it. But that should be the chief financial officer, or we can, or again, the board can make a decision on who to denote for any of the activities that they seem appropriate.
And I guess on each one of these, some work has been done, on each of these buckets, you know, some, there's been stuff since it was our plan last year, too, our, our CDEP. Do we have what progress has been made, or do we have any kind of report on that, up to date? I mean, they're all being carried over, but again, I assume some, you know, action and progress has been going on.
Yeah, so the way we kind of went about it last year was to have, you know, every month, I would update on one of the three, not including this fourth one, being totally transparent, we didn't include this fourth one.
Right, there was some, well, the board did a lot.
Right, the board did a lot of work, and so we kind of felt like that was embedded work. So, we, each, kind of on a rotating scale, so each month, I would update on one of the three different pots, and then, so we can go back to some of those exact, or I'm happy to write, you know, narrative updates, if that's easier for you all to see. I've done that in the past, just do narrative updates and not do them in person, but I thought maybe it was a little bit more beneficial to have it where you could ask questions, but I'm happy to do it.
Yeah, I think it'd be nice to have them in writing.
Sure, absolutely. Yeah, I, I remember that, to be honest, so...
This year, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
Believe it or not, I don't remember every single thing.
I understand, I completely, I'm the same way, yeah. All right, quick, two little pieces, and then I will, I will move that away. One, I just wanted to continue work with the equity audit. On December 4th, just last week, pretty cool, so we brought the equity and achievement team into this room. As you can see, there's a little camera above that TV right there. That is technology that we've put at the school, so that we can do professional meetings. So, we were able to have all of our schools at one time join a meeting. That was, the equity team was here, and they all, each school logged into the Google Hangout and supported that team. Mr. Asher led the presentation of that, and just explained to all, all certified staff that was in the district about the results of the equity audit, and informed them of the equity plan. So, that's the actual presentation there that we use. I can send you a copy of that. That's just a snapshot to kind of give you a visual of what we did. And that's at the middle school, so they projected, Mr. Asher was sitting about right where Ms. Eblin is right now, and, and they, everyone throughout the district saw the equity team and had them present. So, it was a, it was a pretty, it was a unique way to do it, but very powerful, in that we were able to come to, come together as a district, in what took everyone's time of 15 minutes, right? I mean, that's the total amount of time it took for us to come together as a district, utilizing that, that technology. But more importantly, I think, is that we all got to see, hear the information from one place. It wasn't a sit a representative and then take it back to your school. So, so really great, really powerful next step of the equity audit. And then, the final piece, and I will, I will put some notes in there for you guys. I got my eyes dilated today, I was working on that. It's that last slide, I want to update about the newcomer academy, and by the time they did that, I couldn't see anything anymore. I was like, that's not going to go well, if I try to do that with my eyes dilated. That's why that slide is blank. I reveal too much information frequently. So, that is, that is, I just wanted to give you guys, we were able to, with the restructuring of our department, the curriculum and instruction department, the position formerly held on Ms. Higgins, we did not replace that position, and so with doing that, we had some additional money in Title III this year, because part of her salary was paid out of Title III. And what we've done with that, as part of that money, not all of it, from Title III, is we are currently, after school service, offering a newcomers academy. It's at the adult education space, so we're utilizing that space. So, two days a week, from 3:00 to 5:00, students that are brand-new to the United States. So, mainly kids about the fourth grade up. So, you know, when we get students brand-new to the United States that are, that are younger students, you know, you really just want to immerse them, that they can really, they can, they can catch up, right? I mean, you know, they can, we do interventions with them, with our EL teachers, but a lot of our students who are older coming into the country for the first time, so you get high school students that have never been in the United States, they need to, not only do they need additional time for instruction, but a lot of times, they need additional time to learn where the library is, where can I access the ports, where is the health department, where, like, let's go out to, let's go, let's just walk down to the library together. And so, we've been able to fund a newcomer academy two days a week, and we've had regularly 15 students from fourth grade up showing up to this, mainly high school students, middle school, high school students, but we do have a couple of fourth graders in it as well. I just think it's a major celebration. It's really, our, our department, our yellow department is really amazing. Sarah overall largely leads that effort, and she does an incredible job, and I'll just give her a quick shout-out. The teacher, Allison Rayner, was actually running the newcomer academy. She had to be out for a little bit, and Sarah, who already has more on her plate than, than what, sometimes I feel imaginable, with, when she left, she just said, "I'll, I'll take that spot while she's out," and she just added another thing. So, and it's been really amazing for kids. So, I just think, again, kudos to, to that, and I think it's great use of the space that we have, and that being right down, and great use of the, of the fund. So, I just wanted, I've been meaning to update you guys on that, and thought today was a good time to make.
Any questions for Mr. Brain? Mr. Brain, thanks very much. We'll go into the, we have a couple items on the regular agenda. Item A, approve equity plan, Mr. Hawkins.
Right, and I think we had shared a draft of that last week, and, or a couple of weeks ago, and been a few revisions and updates, but this will help us move forward based on the audit that was conducted, and we would ask for your approval of that.
Any discussion regarding the equity plan?
Yeah, I just want to make sure, okay, so what I have in my notes, it still says draft.
Until it's approved.
But this is what we're approving.
It's, it's more draft, questioning question.
Yeah, because you had to approve it.
Yeah, approved it, once it's approved.
And what difference, or what differences, what changes were made since we had the presentation from her?
Yeah, the main difference is that there's additional details added under the part, so when it talks about identifying community partnerships, we kind of stepped out what that would be. When we, the part where it talks about a curriculum, you know, like a curriculum audit, that timeline was extended a little bit, it didn't start immediately. That was from her feedback, that we don't want it to, you can't start everything January 1st, and that, she's like, you've got to, you've got to spread some things out, or else you're going to end up getting yourself, you and your team kind of stuck behind timelines out the gate. And then also put some additional, in terms of the visuals, it was kind of just written in there as identify a person to increase visuals, culturally responsive visuals across the school. We kind of stepped out exactly what that would look like, in terms of identify a teacher, train the teacher, create a plan, versus just create a plan, right? So, she just helped us really put additional detail. So, no major activity changes, just additional details put underneath.
And I guess the only other thing, so all the responsible people, and this is what I was kind of trying to ask her, are we going to get a help from her? Because basically, these are all our people who are super and great, but maybe aren't but maybe aren't as culturally or economically diverse. And wouldn't it be better to have some input from some different? So are we, are these pretty much just these people going to?
No, so I can speak specifically to that. I understand your question. So we, as part of the initial RFP that, that you approved of the budget that we approved for that RFP, we have two additional days still to use in that current contract that we have. So the first day, what she's going to do is she's going to spend, that's actually right when we get back to January 15th. She's going to spend the morning training a team of teachers on what, one from each school, on what visual, visually culturally responsive materials are. So that'll be, she'll train and those people will go back and, and actually come up with a responsive plan in the school. The afternoon, she's going to train a team on what culturally responsive curriculum would look like. And so then she's going to go back in the school, then they'll go back in the school and kind of lead that work moving forward. So that's one day and two of the big strategies on there. The other one is that cohort, that leadership cohort. She is going to-
That's the next to the last one involved a cohort about cultural intelligence, yeah.
Yeah, so, so the way that we rough design, and we still need quotes on that continued work, but the first day, she's definitely going to be part of the kickoff, talking about what that cohort should look like. But the rough design of it is that we'll kick it off April 20th.
So it's five to one?
Yes.
Am I looking at the right one down?
Yeah, yeah, we, I moved it up a little bit. So April 20th, we'll kick that-
May 20th, May 1st.
Yeah, it says May 1st, but we're going to do it April 20th because we got, I talked to her today.
I was thinking 2020 the year, okay.
Yeah, so, and what we'll do is we'll do, she'll give that, that cohort like an overview of, you know, of bias, an over, defining culturally responsive, and she'll give an overview of that in the morning. And then we'll work together in the afternoon to determine what that cohort will do in the next school year, so in the 2021 school year. And the rough design, again, with, we'll take feedback and definitely want that cohort to have feedback. But we will, we talked about five models today when I spoke to her, that will have, so five days over the course of next year, she'll, she or somebody, but she has worked with us and we've really enjoyed working with her, will come in and give, so that cohort will spend a day, they'll spend the morning learning about a topic and they'll spend the afternoon talking about how to bring that topic back into the school. So planning for a 45-minute presentation back in the school and do that five times throughout the course of next year. So I totally agree that we can't do this work without the support of an expert in this work.
Just amounts, yeah.
Yeah.
And I guess, so we're not really starting that big thing until April, so we'll have about six weeks of school, maybe, after that gets going.
Yeah, and that really is to kick it off into next year, right? So that, that is really to springboard into the next year, yeah.
Edwards, can we make this a standing agenda item?
I think if you requested it, we can.
Each month where we can talk about it and?
What, what's been done?
Yes, and I had a couple of questions.
James, did you hear that?
Okay.
The, one of the things that the audit noted specifically was that they didn't see any evidence of differentiated content and I don't see a goal reflect, or a strategy reflected on that.
So that would be related to the curriculum. So, so that curriculum review would be their, their objective would be to talk about what type of, what does that really look like, right? Like, so what does that look like in terms of what we do have and what we don't have right now? So that would be that, when she comes back to 15th, she's going to train sort of on what the best practices related to that, right? So what does it look like? When you really look at your, your differentiating content and curriculum to, to represent all different types of groups, what does that really mean? And then the schools will go out and create a plan.
But certainly that's something that we say that we're doing already. So what does it, how will it change going forward?
I will say, I will say, I feel like we're doing that to a degree, right? I will, I will say, I will take the lens of an expert and I can't probably answer that without her, to be honest. You know, I mean, just being straightforward. I can't say exactly what, we've tried to be very intentional, especially when you look at their ELA and social studies units about incorporating all different groups of, of people, so everyone feels that they have a spot in the curriculum as well. But clearly they feel like there's, there's additional levels to that and that's what I hope to learn as well, yeah.
Also, I had asked for this to be put on the website and I know that you did, but it's kind of difficult for just anyone to find. If you go to the school website, it's under curriculum instruction and then you have to go under another tab. And I just feel like that it's kind of important for this to be where when the community clicks on the website, that's something that they can read, because we do have some room for improvement. And I feel like we celebrate everything when, when we have something that we need to improve, it's important for them to see as well. So if you could move that to the front page of the website, I think that would be-
Can you do that, Mr. Brim? Mr. Hawkins?
Okay.
Thank you. Any other items, any other discussion about item A? Is there a motion to approve?
Some.
By Ms. Richardson?
Okay.
Is there a second?
Second.
By Ms. Springgate. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose name, motion carries, your name, Mr. Lee. Item B, approve hardship applications. Mr. Hawkins?
We have two students that have met the requirements to graduate by the end of this month. So we're asking for your approval.
I'll make the motion to approve the two hardship applications. Is there a second?
Second.
By Ms. Springgate. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose name, motion carries, your name, Mr. Lee. Ms. Smith. Financial update.
Hi, yes, you should each have a copy of the November 30th, 2019 cash balance report by fund. And our general fund began with a little over $3 million. Our revenues were 12.1, so we did get our tax money in November. Expenditures, a little over $3 million and ended with $12 million. Our special revenue fund, we began with $82,000. Our revenues, $497,000. Expenditures, $333,000 and ended the month with $246,000. Our district activity fund, we began with $639,000. Revenues, $52,000. Expenditures, $57,000 and ended the month with $633,000. Within that fund is our one-to-one device, very little change, only had a $108 fee collected. So it primarily stayed at $49,000 at the beginning and the ending of the month.
So there's no expenditures in November?
Not for, for November, that's correct.
I had asked for like the 12-month running on that, the, I think at the last meeting, if you had a second to send the-
I, I did.
Did you?
I did, yes.
Okay.
I sent it actually the night of the board meeting.
Okay, thank you.
So our school activity funds, we began with $283,000. Our revenues, $50,000. Expenditures, $57,000 and ended the month with $276,000. Our capital outlay, we had no activities, so we began and ended the month with $180,000. Our building fund, we began with a negative $1.9 million. The revenues are 3.5. That includes the $600,000 that was restricted for the building fund in addition to the two nickels that we currently have passed that are restricted into that building fund. We had a $2,600 debt service payment that transferred into our debt service fund for that payment, as you'll see in just a moment. Our construction fund, we began with $1.3 million. Revenues, $1,500, that's the interest. And then the expenditures of $120,000 and ended the month with $1.200. Our debt service, again, this is just a 40% for that bond payment of $2,600. Our school food service, we began with $315,000. Our revenues, $218,000. Expenditures, $230,000 to $32,000 and ended the month with $300,000. Our daycare operations, we began with $147,000. Revenues, $45,000. Expenditures, $46,000 and ended the month with $146,000. Our community ed, again, had very little activity. We began with a little over $33,000, had $300 in revenues, almost $1,000 in expenditures and ended with $3200. For a grand total, our beginning balance was $4.2 million. Revenue, $16.5 million. Our expenditures, 3.9 and ended the month with 16.7. And Ms. Bradley, if you do not find that email, I can resend it.
Thank you.
Any questions of Ms. Smith? Thank you, Ms. Smith. Mr. Hawkins, it's your turn to review the regular agenda for next one.
We'll begin with the consent agenda items. The first item there are the donations that were made since the last board meeting. You'll see that the vast majority of those are monetary in nature.
But it was nice to see the people bringing the negative lunch accounts for it. That's a really nice thing for community members to do.
The next items are fundraiser requests, and we just have a few this month. Couple of the art group member, and then a couple of our one PTO and then a high school baseball fundraiser. Travel requests, we do have a few trips coming up, different individuals or teams that will be making those trips, so we would ask for your approval on those.
I had a couple of questions on those, Mr. Hawkins. The one, the Kagan training. How does that one differ from what we, because don't we have a contract to do Kagan training in the district? How is it different than that?
This is specifically for music teachers.
Okay, so that's a different type of?
Yes.
Format, okay.
And then, well, can I ask one more question on that? So, and then that's being paid by the middle school site base allocation?
Through their professional development funds that have been allocated to that.
Is that separate from the site base allocation, the professional development funds? Is that a separate allocation?
The section six is what is allocated to school councils, the professional development funds. Typically, the council will approve the use of those funds, but those are funds specifically allocated for professional development.
But they're part of section six?
No, they're separate from section six.
Okay, so they get section six and then a separate ED, correct.
Okay, and then the other one was the training at Harvard. Can you tell us a little bit about that one?
Sure. Obviously, family engagement is a big piece of the Title I grant that we received. And so our public information communications officer, this is a great avenue for her to begin expanding some things that we're already doing in terms of family engagement. It also includes some work on community partnerships. And we felt that fit very nicely with the equity plan, particularly with how we're trying to engage the community with the history of our schools and our county. And so it's to offer some very specific training for her to be able to expand again the family engagement piece, but also the community partnerships. And it's again, part of the Title I grant in terms of family engagement.
So are those the same funds that our family resource center should use as Title I grant funds?
They don't receive any Title I.
What other kinds of things do we spend that Title I community engagement on?
We do, some of our parent nights are paid for through the Title I family engagement. But that, it can be used for trainings as well.
And I will say, I just went to the KSBA conference and there is just a lot of new information or just, I don't know if it's just emerging or if it's just getting a new focus about family engagement and how just really vital that is to student success and the district's success. And then also, whenever I had my last family resource meeting, part of what we're doing now is in that family resource group is looking at different programs and we have to now do some evidence and, and kind of that kind of thing. And the entire meeting, the focus was family engagement.
Right, and I, and I think that's great. I approve that. I mean, I totally agree. It sounds like these funds are unique to that. I just wonder if it'll provide evidence, if it's better to use them on developing the evidence, developing more local?
Well, Katie has to approve our Title I plan and that was part of our Title I plan and they were, they did approve that.
I think my question is, why are we sending our public relations person for this instead of sending the lady thing that does the?
Family resource?
Yes.
We share, what's her name?
What's her name?
Oh, we have two family resource centers.
Yeah, they split them.
Yeah, they split them.
Why aren't we sending someone who actually is engaged with these families that would benefit from this? I'm trying to bear it while we're sending a PR person.
Well, I think it's, part of it is how do we expand some of the things we're doing because those only serve our elementary schools. So how do we expand this all across the district? And again, part of our equity plan was to really engage our community a little bit more and we felt like this fits very well within our job responsibilities. And so the training, we believe, would be, would be beneficial. Any other questions on the travel request? All right, grant request. We are going to be applying for family resource centers, once again, at our middle school and our high school. So we are hopeful that we'll be successful with that. Mr. Wells has begun working on that. We do have grants that our retired teachers association provide. And so we'll have several teachers apply for those. And then we also will be applying for a Whipper County Community Fund grant. We have one request for the use of the school bus. That is to transport some of St. Leo's students in January. Board meeting dates for 2020. We are following a very similar schedule to what we have done in the past. I think we have four months where it's the second and third Mondays, May, June, November and December. Two months where we will actually meet on a Tuesday due to holidays. I think it's the third Tuesday in both months. And then the other months would be the third and fourth Mondays as we have traditionally met. Item G is to approve the comprehensive district improvement plan that Mr. Graham went through this evening with you. We have several non-resident contracts this month. I believe these are the ones that we send out to the vast majority of districts that, where we may receive some students.
On that, I would just like to say, and maybe in January when we start the budgeting process, I really wanted to look again at our tuition, what we charge for tuition. So if we can get that on the agenda and kind of get some information on that as well, kind of how much our local dollars go towards CIC and how many tuition students. You had sent some really good information about the numbers on that, but I think we should probably review and have a discussion again on the actual tuition that we charge for non-residents. So if we could just put that on for January, I think it'll be good to do that while we're starting to talk about budgets.
Okay. Item I is the SRO, general orders, and we have one amendment. The resource officers are required to have two weapons. Currently, they carry a firearm and they also have a nightstick. And so this would, this amendment would allow them, in place of the nightstick, to carry a taser. And so they would have to go through all the training required, but that would be allowed then as the second weapon for them. And that's the only change to the orders.
So the law requires them to carry two weapons or allows them to carry two weapons?
What you have, ma'am, is you have a lethal weapon and you have less than lethal weapons.
And that's required to have both kinds?
It's, it's required to have a less than lethal, yes.
Would tasers be appropriate for elementary school?
Or would you just do the, well?
All that's allowed.
They are elementary. So is a taser appropriate for elementary school level child?
What are you talking about? Are you talking about deploying?
As a secondary weapon.
Are you talking about deploying on a child, ma'am?
Yes.
No, no, they will not be deployed on children. That, that is-
It's a case of an intruder.
For protection of the students, should be that.
And reading all of the other information provided, nothing else changed. It was just?
Just the addition of that one, yes.
Any other questions about any item or any consent agenda? All right, the action items. Item A is to accept the notification of personnel matters. That's everything that's occurred since the last board meeting.
Thank you.
Item B would be the acceptance, the notification of bills. Item C is the approval of the minutes for the November 6th to November 18th meetings. All of those were in attendance, so we'll be able to do those as one item. And then the November, the 11th board meeting would need approval separately. Item E is the 2020 and 2021 instructional calendar. There are three options. One, the first two have the start date of August 30th. One, the first two, uh, have the start date of August 13th with different, um, fall breaks. Uh, the third option does have a later start date and has a later end date. Uh, I believe it ends in June, uh, if we were to start a week later, maintaining that.
Will Garrett present like the committee's recommendation or?
The committee's recommendation was the second option.
Number two.
Number two, okay.
That's out of the options.
And that's the one.
It's this first full week in October is the fall break.
Is that, like last year, I know they liked it because it corresponded with the end of the nine weeks?
Yeah.
Isn't that the same way at fall this year?
Um, it's closer to, to the natural nine-week break if we do first full week.
Not as close to like this year.
Yeah, of course, the second Thursday, which we typically started on, it's a little later next, next year. It's August the 13th, so it's not quite as close to the, to the, to the natural break.
And I think they wanted to avoid being in September too with the fall break because the initial one was, I think, I wanted it was in the, at the end of September.
Oh, and then you had, how many teachers on the calendar committee? Like, what's the makeup on that?
You're required to have a principal, uh, two parents, two committee members, classified staff representation, um, one teacher from the middle or high school level and one teacher from the elementary level. We had, we had a high school teacher and an elementary teacher.
And that's made in law.
One board member, um, and we did have a, a middle school certified staff member as well, above and beyond what the, the law requires.
So they liked the earlier start date versus, I think it's the 10th versus the 7th or the?
The, the 13th?
13th versus?
Yeah, so it was basically unanimous, uh, recommendation for number two. Couple other items just on the calendar. Every four years, there's not an election in Kentucky. And so the calendar year 2021, there's no, you won't see an election day in May on those calendars. And you won't see one in November for the following year when we get that. Um, something new, uh, that we are recommending this year, um, is an early release day in August. For this, at the end of August, the last one is for the sole purpose of safe schools training, our, our required trainings that our staff have to do. It seems like we've had hours and hours added over the year toward, it's really almost a couple of days worth of training that we're asking our staff to do.
Just for safe school?
Well, just, just for required back-to-school training that we, we warehouse in safe schools. And so while the early release day doesn't, it doesn't equate in any way, shape, or form to the amount of training that's required, it's something that does give our staff.
Chips away a little.
A couple hours, especially our classified staff. You don't have the flexibility to do it outside of school time, our hourly employees. And so we thought giving them a few hours on early release day, that's a couple hours less. We have to pull them out of the classroom or out of the cafeteria, uh, to do their trainings. So that's why that's on there for the sole purpose. I even put that on the, on the one-page calendar to denote that as, as safe school training.
And I will say, I think the committee does a fabulous job. I love how you roll forward so that everybody kind of has an expectation of when school starts and when breaks are. You can kind of plan from year to year. Um, but the committee, everybody went back and, um, you know, he gave, you gave a lot of information, which was very valuable. And then the committee went back and checked with their constituents and with people at their schools, did surveys, you know, kind of did a majority kind of rules thing and they came back and reported. Um, and, and so everybody really, I think, works really hard in that committee. I think they do a lot of extra outside the committee, um, hours worth of work. But, um, I really think just having a formula is a really nice thing as a district. So there's consistency from year to year and I think that's important to people.
Were you on that, Sharon?
Yes.
Thank you, too.
I like that committee.
Sometimes it's a no win committee. I mean, nobody's going to.
Yeah, I've done that committee for the past couple of years and it's always very well run. I mean, Garrett, you do a wonderful job just providing the information. He gave us information about different districts' breaks and how things work. And then we had input, you know, everybody can't win, like you're saying. So we had input from high school, from elementary school and from middle school folks, kind of saying. And then also from parents because, you know, we want to make sure that when we do those half days, that they're valuable days, that people can understand what they're for. And what we're currently doing is pulling staff out of classrooms and away from their jobs to go do computer safety trainings. And they all have to be done at a certain time, a certain day. And so to have that flexibility for something as important as, um, the school safety training, we thought was really, as long as we communicated that to parents, we felt like the parents would understand and think that was a valuable thing to do.
Item F, Mr. Lieutenant?
All right, um, that is to approve the BG five for the, um, high school choir room project that we installed.
Their budget.
Mm-hmm.
That's nice.
Those are always positive. And then item G is to approve the design development for the new high school, phase one, BG 19353.
I had some questions about that, um, is the current agenda?
They'll be here.
Next week, okay.
Any other questions regarding anything the superintendent has shared with us? Mr. Al, do you have anything for us?
Oh, um, no.
Nothing, Ms. Eagle?
Well, just that I, I'm sorry to respond to the email and somehow missed it about dates for a data session.
Oh, yes.
I'm so sorry, um, what we want to do about that, it's just so important and, you know, I hope that's not, that email. Um, are we going to try to set a date or?
I had emailed Mr. Hawkins and said, you know, in light of the, everyone's crazy schedules in December, do we want to just add it for next week? And he said, he would rather wait and talk tonight with everyone present.
It takes a while and I don't like to rush it.
It's really.
And I know one of the dates was the 12th, which is only two, three days away, but is that out of the question for everybody? Is it too late to say the 12th? I mean, that was a bigger stuff, but three days, but I think we've probably been talking about this a lot anyway, so. We, I can't do. I think we talked about that this week. Okay, I just know that was one of the dates.
I also can't, that's holiday performance at the school.
And it's also the orchestra concert, but I, um, okay. What about, um, anytime next week? I know Scott, you thought it was just going to be too busy next week.
I think next week is awfully hectic with the last week of school.
I.
I don't think it's ever going to be a good date unless we, unless we do it on a board meeting day because we have gone through this for two months now trying to find a date.
What did you say, Jamie?
Before the board meeting, that's what I was going to say on the 16th.
I, I'm all in for that.
Yeah, like just show up at four?
Four o'clock.
I can do that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just don't want to try to do it during the board meeting because, yeah.
What day?
We need to make the board meeting earlier if we're going to fit it in.
Put what?
Next 16th.
Okay.
Okay.
I can do a special from four to six.
Yeah.
All right, whatever you need to do, okay.
And that would be the regular one alone, if that is acceptable.
That's acceptable.
Is that enough time?
Is that enough time, Scott, for everybody to be ready?
I think so.
Or that they can come or we can.
No, I meant, is four to six enough time to present the data?
Yeah, I think, I think we can, if we know we have a two-hour limit, we can do it. And then if we need to run out of it, we'll do it after the year. You know, if we think, oh, we need a little bit more information, we can just do another one after the new year. Does that sound good or?
Yeah, we have.
I think we can do it in two hours if we're focused.
All right, next Monday, um, Angel.
We're going to post them.
Four to six, thank you. Ms. Richardson, I mean, excuse me, this Eagle, is that it?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Richardson.
Good, thank you.
Ms. Springgate?
Um, I did have a couple things. Um, I was going to, uh, see if we could, um, add to the agenda next week, uh, discussion on, uh, the attorney, the board attorney. And then also, um, wanted to see about setting a forum date.
How do you, how would you like for your agenda item to read?
Uh, each.
Are you talking about Mr. Chinowitz?
Uh, no, Mr. Salisbury.
Okay.
So discussion regarding board attorney.
If you, I, I have never turned anybody down for putting something on the agenda, if that's what you would like to do.
And then I just wanted to see if we could go ahead and, um, see about getting a forum date set. I know we said maybe January, since the first two got canceled.
We'll put that on the agenda for Monday night, too. Anything else?
Do you want both either under discussion or do you want them under action?
It's Ms. Springgate's idea, whatever she would like.
Um, I guess under action is fine.
What would the action be on the attorney?
Well, um, after we have the discussion, uh, you know, if anybody had any sort of, uh, uh, you know, a vote that they would want to be held or something. I'm not sure, I just hate to put it on discussion and then have to put it on action for the month after. It just seems to work better if we have things on for action items, just to get through them.
I've learned the hard way that if you're not very specific, it can lead to problems.
Would you prefer discussion?
I'm not, I'm just saying, if you put something on too broad, it can lead to problems.
Discussion's fine.
Okay. All right, so that's you, you all add those too? Angel, thank you, thank you. Anything else?
Um, no, just, um, hopefully the, um, we think the architects will definitely be here on that.
They will be here. They will be here. I think they always come with two or three. Angel, would you be sure that, that the architects will be here Monday night? Thank you. Okay, Ms. Bradley?
I would say that the Thanksgiving food drive was fantastic. Proud of everyone at the high school, Ryan. If you can pass that along, it was wonderful as always. And having a chef come from Woodford County was a neat opportunity, I thought. And all of the holiday activities at the schools are always fun and wonderful. And I appreciate every, all of the hard work of the staff to prepare those, to clean up after, to stay late and do the custodial duties. I'm very appreciative that they allow our kids to do those things.
How many hams or meals did you pack, Danny?
I picked up the 90 hams and 90 pies that they had gotten donated at the high school.
So we should say thank you for your, for your work.
No, I was bored.
Your car still smelled like a ham.
No, and I couldn't believe, when they said that, I thought, is that all going to fit? But they were in boxes, so it was a lot more compact. And when the kids at the high school came out to unload them, it was done in about 90 seconds with young arms, backs, and legs lifting and carrying. It was fun.
Anything else? Only thing I have is four and a half hours. Four and a, four hours and 31 minutes. We won't have a new governor and a new lieutenant governor. And I think that we should never underestimate the power of democracy and the people's votes. Yeah, you know, every four years we get a new president, every four, you know, people have the opportunity to vote. And I just think it's, it's a wonderful thing that, uh, that, uh, the people have an opportunity to truly make a difference in, uh, the government in which, uh, we live. And that's all I have. Motion to adjourn by Ms. Bradley, second. By Ms. Richardson, all in favor, say aye. Pose name, motion carries. Thank you all very much.